Nine o'clock, we are here on this thirteenth day of June 2023 for our regularly scheduled Carls County Commissioner's Court meeting. We do have a fore president, so let's end the prayer and pledge.
Heavenly Father, we come to that before you and ask that you be with our county today as we mourn the loss of some of our young men. We ask that you be with us today as we go on about your business and try to do what is right. We also ask that you bring us the gift of rain again, and please be with our country and our county as we go about and try to do what is right. You ask us your name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every justice for all.
Okay, item number five, citizen, should be, should be, everybody signed up? All right, we move to item number six, and that is to discuss the DSHS Region Eight activities for the 2022 calendar year, acknowledging staff and services available to Carls County. I double checked, I wanted to make sure that it's supposed to be 2022, and it is.
Yes, sir. You report the year before.
All right, I have a little speech here, sorry, guys. Good morning, everyone. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for giving us a few moments of your time this morning. My name is Amanda Segura, and I work with the Texas Department of State Health Services. I am the Carls County Public Health Nurse. We are located just a few blocks from here and co-house with HHS Dean, so just down the road near the library. Dr. Jennifer Schufert is the Commissioner of Health for our great state. Dr. Lillian Rindstorf is Region Eight's Medical Director, and Gil Morrow is our Deputy Regional Director. I'd also like to introduce you to Heather Aguilar. She is a new employee that just started with us here in January. She is our new Public Health Prevention Specialist. Big, big title there, so. And our guest this morning, we have Rachel Pannington. She is Public Health Prevention Specialist with the Zoonosis Program at Region Eight, and then Dr. Katherine Velasquez, who is our boss, and the Community Health Program Managers. The specific programs that we work on here at Region Eight are the Community Health Program and is under the direction of Dr. Velasquez. There are some of the health topics that we are currently focusing here in Carls County. Youth tobacco prevention, of course, with our kids and baby, we try to get out into the community and provide education on that. We do child injury prevention. I am a car seat certified car seat technician, as well as Heather, she just got certified as well. So we help with stuff like that, water safety, bike safety, any needs that the community requests. We have our Head Start program that sometimes asks us to come and do a parent class, and whatever the topic is, we try to get out there and do those for them. Our clinical standpoint, we provide immunizations to the committee members that qualify. We also do free HIV and STD testing. We do partner treatment as well as condom distribution. We've worked with some of the other community, like TB, epigeneal, zoonosis, wherever those programs need us, they'll call us and ask for assistance, so we step in and help out as well. Some of the community activities that we are currently working on here, we are working with Autokaiser to provide their first annual summer camp, so we're going to be out there doing a personal hygiene and health for the kids, and I think it's ages K through fifth, so that's going to be interesting. And then we're also working with Megan Martinez, who is the Wesley Nurse here, they're going to do their first annual resource roundup, so we're excited that's going to kick off in July, and I believe you might be part of that, so. As I said, we're kind of just working in the community wherever they need us. In front of you is the Region Eight's 2020 report. You can find multiple stories about programs that have been working in the state and trying to do their efforts, you know, to keep Texas healthy and then moving in the right direction. And at the very back of the report, you can see all the program managers, contact information, so that if you ever have questions that you're really welcome to reach out to them if needed. Our annual report is also available online at eshs.texas.gov. You can just type in the search bar and it will pull up, and then I believe they archive the previous ones if you're ever interested. Any questions for you guys?
Is Carrie still with the DSHS? Karen Cooper?
The emergency response? Yeah, I guess she's still there. And actually, the emergency response team is going to come out to that resource roundup, and they're going to bring one of their vehicles and do emergency disaster information, hurricane safety, stuff like that, so we're excited to get them involved.
DSHS was critical as we were going through COVID. They amended when answering the phone, I talked to Dr. Rindstorf several times, they were incredible, incredible to work with, and it's something that you, until you have something happen, it's not something that you even realize that you're getting.
Yes, sir. And that resource, the meeting that we're going to have in July, I'm really looking forward to that because coming together, we're making, you know, a little coalition of us together, and it's amazing what you don't realize is available to you.
Absolutely.
And so this resource roundup is going to help, you know, kids of, from kids to the elderly, and everything's going to be free, and it's going to give them a chance to realize what services Carls offers to them, so we're excited about that.
I'm excited about it.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Okay, item number seven, discuss approved, disapproved interlocal cooperation agreement and business associate agreement between Carls County EMS and Southwest Texas Regional Advisory Council, STRAC, through the electronic records management system, the ERMS, from Image Trend, and allow Judge Hethke to execute documents. Casey?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. This is an exciting topic that I'm going to quickly, that's a hard word for me to do actually sometimes, is quickly say things. Some background, all of our patient care reporting, so every time we interact with a patient or we get a call for service through the 911 Center, any facility transfer request, it all has to be documented. Currently, the vendor we use through the STRAC coalition is ZOL, EPCR. That software is in the pipeline. ZOL has switched products to a web-based or file-based version, so we, as a region, were forced to look at a new vendor. So we did a pretty long journey of looking at five different vendors, and the vendor we chose to go with as a region is Image Trend. So before you, there's two documents that need to be executed on our behalf by Judge Hethke and then subsequently fully executed by STRAC, so that we can start the implementation period probably over the next sixty to ninety days. The goal across the region, of course, all 22 counties, is to have all participating agencies live by October the first. So I wouldn't say we're under the gun, but there's a lot of stuff in the background that's working to get this to go live. So quickly talking about the two documents, the BEA is pretty straightforward. It's just some protected health information and HIPAA disclosures, making sure that we're not going to have any mistreatment of the data. Everything is hosted onsite or on premises by STRAC in the Image Trend servers, so that was one unique thing to Image Trend, is they actually still allow the region to host the servers in-house, whereas other vendors do not allow that. It's, I'm not going to go into all that craziness, but nonetheless, it was a win for us, so the BEA will cover that. The interlocal agreement is very similar to what's already been executed many years ago, that's still in existence on the auto renewal period. Just some quick notes, it's a one-year term with five automatic renewals on top of that, so total length of the document is six years. One thing I bring your attention to is the pricing piece, so the current vendor I alluded to earlier, we're paying 2013 price on that. So you could, you know, we're currently driving, you know, a 2013 Ford F-150, and now we're moving into a 2023 Ford Grand. And obviously, the price has changed because of that. So all that to say, what it's going to cost the county, and Judge Hethke and I talked about this in our budget meeting, annually is a $3,000 agency fee, so $3,000 agency fee, that's the same if I'm in San Antonio Fire, if I'm in San Antonio Carls County EMS, that fee does not change, it's distributed amongst all participating agencies. Where the additional costs is incurred is the run volume, so we pay per run in the system, which is $3 a run. So our volume last year was 2,046 transports, so that times three calculates, so $6,138 for a total annual cost of $9,138. There is a built-in, so we not get behind, on our current pricing scheme, we built in an automatic 3% increase to the run costs, so the $3,000 agency fee is going to be the same every single year, that there's a built-in 3% cost for the run piece of it. So that's the, that's the really only kind of interesting thing that I want to bring to your attention. Assistant County Attorney Tapia has reviewed both documents without any request for revision or issue, so I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, but we are excited to move into this new product, and it's going to be a big win for the region.
Casey?
Sir.
On page 719, you leave that the project descriptions, how is a fire incident, what do you know, work with that? Is that something the fire department will have access to?
I'm glad you brought that to my attention. So seven of 10, the EMS project, so one thing I did feel, Commissioner, thank you, Commissioner, for giving the opportunity. This is a turnkey product, so we are purchasing every option that Image Trend has available today. So if we were, right now, we do not have CAD and United Dispatch, but three years from now, five years from now, if we wanted to have the CAD module in Image Trend coordinated with what the Sheriff's Office may be using at that time, that's already built into the price. The fire reporting specifically you talk of is for the large firebase EMS systems in San Antonio, so they, they have a, you have your EMS response, you also have your building inspections and your hydro plants and building schematics. Image Trend is a turnkey product. It's not only EMS-based care reporting, it has a fire component to that as well, so that list is literally à la carte. We can pick and use what we want or need at current time, but know that we're priced and we're paying for everything on that list.
I'm glad you mentioned about the CAD system, that's something that's coming, we're going to have to go to that sooner or later.
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely something that makes everybody's life a little bit easier, and from a record management system perspective, it does help, and it just makes the EPCR a little bit quicker because it's importing data from the computer directly to your EPCR, but there's obviously associated costs on the backend that are required for that, but there's some pretty interesting features that Image Trend offers that we won't be using tomorrow, but we will be using in the future.
On the 3%, if we're going to incorporate every year, if we don't, if the run volume comes down, will we be reimbursed any?
No, so the 3% will be to the, so it'll be $3 per run, add 3%, so if the volume goes down, we'll still incur that 3% per run, but ultimately, the cost will go down because we have less runs, if that makes any sense.
Yes, that's true.
I hope our, it's kind of a six-point way of thinking, I hope our call volume doesn't increase because it means people are sick and injured, but at the same time, we want to stay steady with the service.
Does yours, your run volume correct, you think, pretty close?
No, I do. We have about 2,200 calls for service per year, but of that, you know, there's transports and then there's no contacts, there's canceled calls and all that stuff, but they pull that number directly from our EPCR system that we have today, so they have visibility into all of that. And on the backend, from performance improvement standpoint, and all the analytics that STRAC and all the trauma surgeons at University Hospital, BAMC, it's all one big pile and bucket of data, and it's just phenomenal, the research that can be done on a back, it has been done, it can be done on a backend, and we're all on the same sheet of music, so power in numbers, that's our favorite.
More discussions in the court.
The numbers we approve, second.
Item number eight, as stated. Item number seven.
Seven.
Okay, motion in the second, all those in favor, signified by raising your right hand. Any votes of that? All right, Casey, number five, you heard all of them. Thank you, Court. Item number eight, discuss approved, disapproved recommendation by the KCRP engineer to award a contract to C.K. Newberry for the construction of improvements to County Road 125 for the amount not to exceed
Good morning, Court. Yes, we, this is our latest CTIP project, we just accepted bids on. We had four bidders, one of them was new, prices were pretty competitive, they continued, as the year has gone on, we continue to see more and more competitive pricing. The lowest bid was about $300 and something thousand below my estimate, which is amazing, great, we get this good year to build infrastructure, so that's my recommendation is to award the County Road 125 project to C.K. Newberry at that price and state.
I make the motion to approve, item number eight, as presented, second.
Okay, you've got a motion in the second, all those in favor, signified by raising your right hand. Any votes of that? Carrie, thank you, Court. Okay, item number nine, discuss slash take possible action proclamation of a resolution calling for additional measures to secure the border, stop the invasion at the border, and protect our communities. Sean O'Brien, citizen and patriot, sponsored by Finney Lissy, Commissioner precinct two.
This is a resolution of calling for additional measures to secure the border, to stop the invasion at the border, and protect our communities. It's a coalition of counties and judges to come together so we can have a greater voice for the nation and the state. And I have a statement here from Sean O'Brien, he couldn't be here today, he asked me to follow the reading. And it says, "Please excuse my absence from court today, I had a fire commitment that I could not change. I'm a foreigner, county commissioner, a patriot, a member of American Legion, Post 415, and founding member of the South Texas State. I believe in hoping you pray for the best and be prepared for the worst. This resolution will help to accomplish that goal. At least sixteen other South Texas counties have already either voted to adopt this resolution or have committed to adopt it soon. Some people may tell you that we do not have an illegal alien immigrant problem here in Carls County, so why do we get involved? Hundreds of illegals are processed every day right here in Carls City at the Geo Processing Facility. This processing is like a revolving door, the thousands of illegals being processed in and out of our county every month. These are just the ones that we know about. On the other hand, the Mexican cartel is moving illegals, drugs, and children for sex trafficking through our county and neighboring counties every day. These are the ones that we don't care about because until now, they have been using our roads and highways to move people and drugs through here to San Antonio and Houston. They don't want to get caught, and they're very good at what they do. We need to support and pass this resolution to not only show support for our neighboring counties, but to give us a larger, stronger voice at the Capitol and Austin. By banding together and being better informed and prepared, we'll be able to handle any situation or crisis that may come our way. We need to vote on and pass this resolution now. Thank you, Sean O'Brien."
Commissioner, what does this resolution involve us in?
Uh, support, just support, no monetary, no equipment, just show support and we would support this resolution.
Doesn't commit the candidate to anything?
No.
No.
You're kind of being called out on this.
Judge and Commissioners, Court, I know the surrounding counties are seeing the, have been seeing the bellouts in their counties as far as Atascosa Sheriff Soward, Live Oak County, Sheriff Busby, and South Maguee and Goldiac County, but we have not seen an increase here in Carls at this time, we haven't. I know this last time, they were getting prepared for it, but we have not seen an increase. Now, the residential center, I know they have them come in every day, it just, it varies on their, their count, so.
The residential center is not folks that are being arrested and taken?
No, correct. Correct, yes, correct.
You know, my concern about this is that, well, I mean, I'm in favor of this whole resolution just for the support of our neighboring counties that they've kind of, and I think we need to support our counties that are all part of the 254 Kansas State of Texas, but I hope I'm not getting off the topic, but my concern is that with this hot weather, if we have any of them coming across the country, I don't know, if it's a large pack, I don't know how, how hard or how we would be able to handle, in terms of immediate response of it, 12% tell me how to come through the others. This heat really starting to worry me a lot. This is a 10-county consortium, is what I'm reading, I think we've got 17 counties.
Who's he?
Judge Coon.
Don't please see that, I'm sorry, the interrupt, but we can't hear what I'm saying.
I think it's 17 counties, that Judge Coon is, yeah, he's hoping to get a whole lot more, the more voices we have to send a message to Washington and to the, to Austin, the better off it will be.
Sir.
I know that whatever happens with all this, I know that Carls County will step up to assist in the way we can, you know, I've heard Judge Hethke say he'll do whatever he can to, to step up if we need, if there's something that happens where we have to protect the county or as well as with the State of Texas. With that being said, I'll make a motion that we approve this resolution.
I have second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second, all those in favor, signified by raising your right hand. Okay, I'm against this, and I'm going to be on record for those that are listening out there. I have talked to lots of folks that are concerned about this, I'm concerned about this, and I'm all for doing something to support that. A broad painted resolution that is not tailored to Carls County is as good as a piece of paper that you're about to read, and so I'm against that. I am 100% for getting the border closed and secured, I'm 100% for legal immigration, if you want to come to this country, make yourself better, do it the right way, and there's ways to do that. But in my opinion, this is, this is just a, in name only, is what it is. And I've spoken to all the judges, my surrounding county judges, and whenever this was first started, I did go to Atascosa along with the other county judges that surround Atascosa County, and voiced support. I told Judge Coon that we will support, I will do anything that I can to help you within reason and anything that this county can afford, if you're having those problems. Talking to those county judges, they're not seeing it. I can tell you text messages from county judges that, who have in the last couple of days passed this in their courts for support in name only, and to me, you're not, you're not doing anything. I think you're riling up citizens for no reason, and you can show support in actual physical ways of supporting, and not just reading a newspaper. This is something that was drafted for Atascosa County specifically. I'm the judge of Carls County, I'm going to fight for Carls County, and I'm, you know, Atascosa County can do what they want, Close County can do what they want, and support them, but I'm going to fight for Carls County. And in my opinion, if you want to do something, you should tailor it for Carls County, not just a broad name rush. So I'm against it, the motion will carry, the vote is four to one, in favor. Item number 10, morning, is consent agenda, we have our minutes from May 9th and then May 23rd, we have our reports from our county clerk, our Constable Precinct One, our Constable Precinct Three, our Elections Administration, IT Department, JP One, JP Four, Maintenance Department, Sheriff's Office, Tax Office, Texas DMV.
And the Texas DMV is something new that Tammy thought about including for y'all, just in case, if it looks unfamiliar.
Thank you. And I'd like to go back, I need a legal opinion on this, on the resolution, probably, Commissioner Lissy can read that resolution for the record, but I'm not.
Yes.
Want to read it, I can? I want a legal, when, should we, should we go back before we do the consent agenda?
Yes, it should be read into the record.
Okay. So I apologize for that. We'll let Commissioner Lissy read the resolution.
Okay, it says, "Whereas the preamble to the United States Constitution outlines the chief responsibilities of the federal government to ensure domestic tranquility and to provide for the common defense, and whereas Article Four, Section Four of the United States Constitution provides, United States shall guarantee to every state and union or government shall protect each of them against invasion. And whereas Article Four, Section Seven of the Texas Constitution provides, the Governor of Texas, the legal authority, as commander in chief of the military forces of the state, and he shall have power to call forth the militia to execute the laws of the state to suppress insurrections and repel invasions. And whereas cartels exploit weak and unsecure borders for their own power and profit to the detriment of our communities, and whereas cartels act as paramilitary narcoterrorist organizations that profit from trafficking people and drugs into the United States. And whereas Governor Greg Abbott, the State of Texas, the public safety, and the Texas National Guard are using legal authority vested in this Texas Constitution to secure the border, stop the smuggling of drugs, weapons, and cartel trafficked people into Texas and prevent detective, interdict transitional criminal activity between ports of entry. Whereas, since the launch of Operation Lone Star March the 4th, 2021, the multi-agency effort has led to more than 376,000 apprehensions and more than 28,000 criminal arrests and more than 25,000 felony charges reported. Texas DPS counter drug warfare operations have seized over 86 million lethal doses of fentanyl, more than enough to kill every man, woman, and child in the United States. And whereas the ongoing border security crisis is not acceptable, has resulted in a security threat and humanitarian disaster with overwhelming consequences to residents of the State of Texas. And whereas..." And whereas numerous border counties experiencing local disaster situations as a result of inadequate border security have passed declarations, declarations and resolutions calling for further action and security on the southern Texas border. And whereas, Atascosa, Wilson, Carnes, Freo, LaSalle, Bemidji, Medina, Kenny, McMullen, and Lywood County, and the representatives therefore have formed a consortium to promote the common goal of safety, security, and well-being for their residents. These 10 counties have recognized how vital the safety of our residents and visitors is to maintain a free and prosperous society and have come together to support security measures at our southern borders. Now therefore it be resolved, the 10-county consortium will unite to support each other to stop the ongoing crisis, but all legal means and fellow will work with the Governor Greg Abbott, the Texas Department of Public Safety, and the Texas National Guard, and the law enforcement agencies within 10-county region to protect and defend the state of Texas from detrimental effects of the border crisis, and will work within the consortium to provide support in repelling and declaring invasion of those who relentlessly go to great lengths to circumvent, circumvent the laws of Texas and the United States to America."
Thank you. All right, we'll go back to the consent agenda now.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Any opposed to it? Nothing to pull from the consent agenda. We'll be completing reports. Okay, with item number 12, we have updates from our commissioners, starting with precinct one.
Okay. As Judge Hickey and I met with, with Atascosa, McMullen, and Wilson County judges and their emergency managers about joining a four-county quad consortium, Quad City LEPC, there were also TDM, Texas Department Emergency Management, representatives there, and they explained what the LEPC does and can give us a little refresher. What it is, is the LEPC stands for Local Emergency Planning Committee, and by law, we're supposed to have, have, you're supposed to have a committee and then you can meet quarterly, or you can be there a month, some are more active than others. But, problem that we've been having in all these other counties as well as in Carnes is that we try to get the industry to come, they don't want to come to, to four different meetings. So, what we're going to try to do is have, have a meeting in East, in East County, and hopefully we can, we can kind of get the LEPCs at least active again. And I think it's, and I think it's going to be a, a good, a good, a good fix for everybody in the county, and these counties as well. Also, as a matter of fact, on June the 12th, 15th is going to be a meeting at, in McBellum County from 1:00 to 3:00, so I'll, I'll be trying to go to that, Judge. Also, met with Shannon Goria, she's a general land office person for the state of Texas, she's based in Victoria. She doesn't, she doesn't have the office, she kind of works out of a car. And, but she was here talking about mitigation plans and funds that are available for revising mitigation plans. And I know that I've talked with Judge Hickey and we still decide what we're going to do, but there, she told me that there's going to be money available to help, the way I understood the judge in court is that they're to help rewrite a plan or edit the plan, because our plan expires in 2025. So, we, we want, it takes about a year to get this thing all done, and time female approves everything and stuff like that. So, it's something that we may want to look at next year trying to, to, to do. Redo, tomorrow, I've got Steve Harris, the state planner, he's going to come in to talk about TAPS, and TAPS is Texas All-Hazard Planning System. And Steve wants me to become a tester for the program, we're going to a beta system, and he wants to show me that system, as well as, where we do normally the annexes, there's 26 annexes, we're going to be doing what they call ESF's format, which is supposed to be a little easier to do and, and not as cumbersome. But anyway, we're going to, I'm supposed to be with him tomorrow at 10 o'clock, we're going to, we're going to be doing that. On Jul, I got notice yesterday that on July 5th, there's going to be a G200 course, that's for elected officials, it's a workshop, and there's nothing is set in stone. I was excited, just got it yesterday, I hadn't even told the judge yet. But what it is, is it's an elected official workshop where the city, schools, county, and even anybody in the, in the, within the, the government of the county can, can attend, but it's priority to the elected officials. And it's going to be from 9:00 to 1:00 if we can get this course started. And just what he does, it explains what the, what the, how the system, ITDM works and how you get help for your counties. On July 22nd, there's, as the man that said, that there's a, at the Carnes County Show Barn from 9:00 to 1:00, there's going to be a resource, we call Resource Roundup. We have everybody in the county that provides some type of service, we'll have a table, there'll be games, games for the kids and everything like that. But there's things that, organizations that provide services to people that Carnes County is not taking advantage of, and.
The county or the residents?
The residents, Judge, correct, the residents, thank you Judge, thank you. But anyway, they're not, they're not aware of it, or we're not doing a good enough job getting the word out. So, the Westinghurst, and we've been meeting at the Methodist Church monthly, and, but it's, I think it's going to be a great, a great effort for the community. On the commissioner's side, on the June 20th to 23rd, I'll be in Houston for a state mental health conference, that's with Community Real. I'm on the board, and it's the annual meeting. They asked me if I would go to the meeting as a board representative. June 26th to 29th, there's going to be a, the South Texas Judges Conference in San Antonio, and I, I plan to go to that, Judge. Also on broadband, I've been on a webinar with the Alamo Area Planning Group, and there's going to be a, on, on House Bill 9, as final approval was given to the bill for $1.5 billion in broadband to expand in Texas, before the legislature adjourned, then they were called back for the special session, but it passed, House Bill 9. Anyway, it was going to happen, it's going to go to the public, once Governor signed it for approval, letting it to broadband fund later this year. And also, on that broadband, it's funny, I was reading the Texas Tribune the other day, and, and I found out that broadband is that Texas decided that they have to figure out how many people have broadband. So, what they're going to do, and, and we're ahead of the game.
Thank you, Judge.
Judge Hickey, after we were, we were ahead of the game, they've acknowledged that we are, that you might be getting emails, mails, I mean flyers in the mail asking you if you're to participate in a survey, and the survey will ask you your, where you live, and your, what your occupation is, or if you're a business, what business do you have, and it'll ask you all about your internet, place where you can check your speed, if you're in the internet, and go on. But then later on that same article, it talked about, we need to map our Texas, we need to go ahead and get a better understanding of mapping Texas for broadband. So, I don't know if they're going to make it, Judge, or they're going to come back and say, we want everybody to go ahead and map your counties, or what? I don't, I don't know how that's going to be, but there's talk about that.
We, we'll, we have our map, that, that's the survey that we did, that we sent out.
So, they're talking about, remember about the one house didn't have it?
Right, 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 right.
Yeah, but that's what they're kind of talking about. But again, like you said, Judge, we're ahead of it, we're ahead of the game. And, and so I've been just kind of working with that. I don't know where we are with the other stuff, I haven't been keeping up with, with that part that you're working with, but, or Mr. Rebecca, so. Other than that, I think that's it.
Okay. Mention real quick, yesterday Shelby asked me about, we do have a hyperreach program that it's free to sign up for for our citizens, that you can be informed if there was a, if there was flooding, if there was a disaster, but with the heat coming, I, I looked at it, at the 10-day forecast and starting with, I believe, 106, 106, 106. So, Shelby asked about sending out a, a hyperreach for, you know, just to keep an eye on the heat, they'll be out in it if you don't have to be, so if you see that coming, that, that's what that's going to be.
Yeah, Judge is right. One thing, make sure you stay hydrated. If you have pets, get them hydrated. You drive a car, please look in your backseat. I don't want to have a, Carnes County have somebody leave a little child or a pet in the back of the car and forget about them. It's, you know, I just don't want that to happen. And most of all, if you're working again, if you feel, you know, ill from the heat, if you don't know what it is from the heat stroke, or, you know, heat exhaustion, within doubt, please call INS, they can bring you up. Right, Casey?
I apologize, how is that communication made? Is it a text?
It could come through text, email, landline, phone call, get with Shelby and I after court.
We'll sign you up.
Yep.
Well, I'm thinking about other people that need it.
We've got 200 and something people that have signed up, and, but I'm always looking for more people.
We, we did a Facebook Live about it whenever we first brought this on board, and maybe we need to do another one, and I'm going to do, I'm going to do a Facebook Live for the, the DSHS, DSHS event with the manager, put that.
And, and on our, and on our website, there is a link to that, and you can fill that out. And I, I failed to, to mention, but Jimmy has been a great asset to the county with IT here, with our, with our IT lead. And if you look at our, our webpage, he has streamlined it and really made it look good. Thank you, Jimmy.
Precinct two.
Last week, we met the area engineer and I met with the tech doc, with some citizens in Ransestahoe that wanted to put the, what do you call it, mail pops out there, Wayne?
It's a community mail box. And it was at the corner of County Road 233 and Highway 123. It don't look like it's going to work out there, the location, just what to say, that was up to the tech doc engineer and our county. Also met with the, our tech doc, area engineer, and weather committee, they should start CO-CODING 181 in September, weather committee, and in the near future start milling Highway 181 between Hobson and the San Antonio River Bridge on 181. They're also going to do an attractive count from Hobson and Falls City to see about lowering the speed limit through both of those little communities, and doing a traffic count of 87 bypasses at 181 near the school, to possibly put a traffic light there because of all the traffic and kids turning in toward the school. And yesterday, Falls City Fire Department did their annual Flag Day fundraiser, like Casey said, it was a huge success. They sold out real quick, they sold all their raffle tickets. Casey had the new ambulance there, looks very good, everybody's really impressed and excited about that being there. And tomorrow night, Wayne, our county road bridge engineer, and I will be meeting with the city council in Falls City about a rideaway by our county yard there in Falls City. And Wayne might want to talk about the news from Tech Doc.
Still working through it with you guys, I'm still processing, but we sent the email yesterday, looks like we've got two bridges that the state is greedy to fund 100%. And Commissioner Rosales, I'll send it to you, I thought it was, we were talking about 302, it's actually 230, but these have a very strong likelihood of us not even having to come up with a rideaway. And they'll stable this 100% as far as the work that we've been doing with this, try to take advantage of the bridge program. That program used to be a 90/10 match, now it's 100% now. So, we've got two bridges that we're looking at, one is County Road 230, a bridge, Commissioner Lissy identified about two years back needs some help, and the other one's on County Road 346, the Walker Crossing, so, which has got some washing involved. So, it's a very, it was very good, it'll be, to y'all, to our credit, court, it will be, it'll be probably a couple of wing bucks, so, very good, very good bucks.
Let me tell you, yeah, let's see. Had several calls about trash again, there was some furniture dumped on the sides of the road, and a hot water heater dumped on the side of the road, and I know the by road and bridge, and they were very good, about going out picking up all that stuff on the side of the road. Anybody sees any ones up in any trash, on our roads or our rideaways, please notify us, just.
Okay. Commissioner Precinct.
I'm still currently working on going to all the county roads, making, making a call out, see what's wrong with any of these kind of roads, in my opinion, and my office is working on it right now, and I will be turning it into road and bridge probably here in the next month or so. Also answering any calls from constituents. The good thing is, our engineers, sometimes they call me at 10, 11 o'clock at night, I will call him too, and we'll do work at that time of night. I think the other night it was almost midnight, and we're still working out some of the issues. We are trying to work out the issues whenever the constituents do call. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Precinct.
Well, it's very similar, I've been working with some constituents on their issues with some roads, I've also been working with the road bridge engineer on that, pretty diligently weekends, nights. He and I have also discussed the, the bridge situation, it's kept me appraised to that. Other than that, there's, there's some other irons in the fire that we're trying to work on to, to both counties, other assets that I've been working with the judge and, and on some of those things, and it has been, been a little bit, but starting to get our legs, so.
Thank you. Item number 13, let's have our tax assessor collector give us a report.
Good morning, how are all of y'all? For the month, excuse me, for the month of May, for the current month to date, we had The current year to date was $16,949,149.43, with 98.39% collected. Last year at this time was 98.06, and today when I left the office it was 98.61. For the delinquent month to date, we had $8,552.81. And the delinquent year to date was $106,454.66, with 31.58% collected. On the county INS, for the year, for the current, there was nothing. For the delinquent month to date was $1,599.05. I pulled one late though, sorry about that. For the delinquent, start of, for the county INS, for the delinquent month to date, it was $167.92. The delinquent year to date was $1,638.67, with 39.06% collected. What I had pulled up was the road and bridge. So, for the road and bridge, the current month to date was $17,416.22. The current year to date was The current year to date was $3,463,567.95 with 98.40% collected. And the delinquent month to date was $1,599.05. The delinquent year to date was $21,042.46 with 32.77% collected.
Okay, on our item number 14 is discussion slash acknowledgement of personnel changes. What I have in front of me is new hires in our EMS office. We've got a new paramedic. In our sheriff's office, we have a new bailiff. That's good, we've been short there too. And we have our seasonal part-time employee at the library. And we did have a couple of resignations slash terminations in the road bridge department and nobody's retired. Item number 15, take the bills.
Alma. Good morning. Okay, we have a total of $959,230.50 for the bills. And part of that, G O, is $1,256.17.
For G O?
For G O. Any questions on bills?
The motion to approve, pending that it goes as presented.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Thank you, Alma.
Thank you.
Item number 16, acknowledge commissioners. Court will meet on June 27th, 2023 at 9:00 a.m. Back over at our Karnes County Resort courtroom at 101 North Pantry Avenue, Suite 200, Falls City, Texas. Item number 17, give a motion to adjourn.
I'm moving adjourned.